To be on Saturday and tell me this stuff, none of them.
The camera's on.
That is Mortadella. Excuse me, you didn't get that in your package, your custom package before. We just got that yesterday.
Mortadella, that's my friend named her dog.
Really?
Mortadella, yeah, they call him Morty.
So what is Mortadella actually Charlie?
A super seasoned baloney it sounds to me, it's the first time I've ever tried it. And it's delicious.
It's horrible, I like it.
I've had it before, but I never knew what it was.
Did you change your get together for Christmas until tomorrow or Thursday?
Thursday. Well, it was originally Wednesday Charlie.
I am.
And you said you couldn't attend.
I will likely deliver a charcuterie table with that stuff in it.
Table, a charcuterie table, a charcuterie tray.
I heard you were giving us $2 million.
Did you get the smoke signal?
About $2 million.
Okay, good, good.
I heard you were giving us $2 million.
Barry City is insane for every level?
I, that's, my understanding is that's for kind of part timers, Barry City has full timers. And those are not factored into that.
Okay, so the full time people are salaried or?
Well, they may not necessarily be.
They just have a higher rate.
But it's significant.
Sorry.
This is, yeah, this is. Significantly higher. They're unionized and they'll have much higher rates, these are part timers, that's my understanding, they have. What was it called?
Okay, so this probably, that, this rate is kind of a throw out.
Yeah, exactly.
But I mean, I think it's to remain.
But it's still interesting to know and.
Yeah.
Hello.
Thank you. That's a big, you carry a big box?
I hope you enjoy that, that is Mortadella and it is like a super baloney. No Charlie, do you?
Oh, I'm like, what are you talking about, the ruler?
Ah, I had stuff on that, no, the, I can't make it because I'm not USDA certified. So we've got our fifth quarter in waste field, and he's got an eclectic charcuterie of offerings that is, I mean, it's wasteful, right? So I trade a pig for him to process two of our pigs and then I, then I can sell that at the market.
Because he is.
But he doesn't, the place I do custom, which is not USDA certified, they only have, you know, hot Italian, you know, breakfast options, that kind of stuff. They don't have, let's see, you've got paté, champagne, kielbasa, chorizo, uh.
That's spread though.
Yeah. And kielbasa would've been one, but it's fun, rehens, that's a kind of an adult flavored devils. It's the consistency of, of the stuff in the can, devils, devils food, devils food, yeah, but it's got flavor to it instead of tasting like, oh, my brother used to eat that.
Oh, yeah.
Out of the can, I couldn't stand that.
We all did.
And that was, my brother loved, what's in this, mayonnaise, anchovies and banana sandwich.
What? And he didn't have a bellyache?
Nope. It being six.
Mayonnaise, anchovies and banana sandwich.
Best man.
He was just doing it, or shocked by it, he was a marine. I don't know, I'm sure, I'm sure he put some snake in there too.
So my other brother, who's closer in age, five years apart, can't even look, can't even be in the room with mayonnaise. Because my other brother just.
Right.
Sorry, sorry, I shouldn't be talking personal stuff.
Why not, six o'clock.
Six o'clock, all present have accounted for, we're going over cemetery planning zoning miscellaneous tonight. Also Jeff just handed out what we want requested from last week, the ambulance wages. Okay, Mr. Manager.
Okay.
Just making sure, the water in the bathroom wasn't ready for a reason, was it? Was the pipes facing it?
It's just on.
It was just ready for war.
Somebody must have.
Okay, just wanted to make sure there wasn't a problem with a pipe or something.
In the sink or the toilet?
Or sink, I think.
Sink, something was just.
Wow.
All right.
How fun here.
As you see, the first item on the agenda is the cemetery, page 19.
Is Digger Odell here today?
Oh, yes he is.
We have Bruce right here to talk about cemetery, but as you can see on M, page 19, not a lot of changes there. As you know, Bruce has contract to do the cemetery maintenance primarily mowing, but it does involve some minor tree removal, trimming, some of those type of things. We did put in for wage or contract increase there. Bruce also does sexton work, which we did increase that based on the amount of work. Talk about each of the cemeteries separately, there are quite a few. So again, we're looking at a 3.3% proposed increase in the O and M for cemetery. Bruce, you want to just kind of give a quick update, what's going on with cemetery and needs and things like that?
Sure, Mount Hope is the biggest cemetery, the most, one of, more people frequent than anything else, so. The biggest thing in Mount Hope Cemetery are the trees, the big maple trees along the stone wall that's on the 12A side. Those trees have gotten to the point where they're getting close to being dangerous. Especially the one that's down by the road, that you can, everybody drives by and sees the big limb hanging in it. I've tried to get ahold of some tree companies to come and take that one down and I've had no response from them. But that's the biggest issue in the cemeteries is the tree work, the trees are getting so overgrown. Most of them are rotting out and the limbs are all falling down. We spend at least an hour on each cemetery, every time we go to visit them, picking up debris from the trees. The other issue at Mount Hope is the drainage system situation where the road just keeps getting flooded out. The amount of water that goes from the top of the cemetery all the way down to the main road, that it just runs like a river down there when we get heavy rains. The drains are not operating right, not at all actually, they're just completely clogged. So we've either got to replace the pipe work in them or somehow get them vacuumed out or cleared out so they work properly. They do drain off into the north section, there are pipes going across the road, they just need to be cleaned out or redone.
So we, we have a new back, heavy duty back that can do that, so I'll line that up.
Okay, that would, that'd be great because what's happening is all the crushed stone in those roads and the roads are crowned so much now that when it gets in the gully and it just, it just takes off.
So Bruce, you say it's, it goes into Norwood, which is, can you explain that to me?
If you go up the main road, like going to the top of Mount Hope.
Yeah.
Off the side there, that's Norwood's property, but there's a big drop off there.
All right.
Most of the, most of the, the three, there's three drains in that, in that road. They're all on the left side as you're going out, they all drain across the road down into, down into that area. But there's, it's probably, from the top of the road down into that, there's probably 300 feet. Not enough room for water to disperse before it gets down into, into where they are and there's trees in there, so the trees are going to absorb a lot of the water.
So I'm not following you exactly because you go to the very top, right? And the property, so we're still looking straight up to the right?
Yeah.
So it's well above facilities, it's near the new dorms then? You're saying up at the very top?
Well, there's, where's one drain right at the very top.
Yeah.
As you get up there and it opens up, there's one drain there, way down the road, there's another drain. Way down the bottom where the intersection in the roads is, is the third drain.
And that's what goes over?
All three of them go underneath the road over into Norwood's property.
Interesting. So Manager, you're going to follow up with them?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll.
What about the trees?
So we've reached out to a tree person, it's been tough finding someone, but we do have funds in there, so we have more trees that need to be done and we'll get those done, we have one.
Well, do we have enough?
There was, there was a program, I read it in the Norwood News probably, I'm going to go back four or five months, that the state had grants for taking out trees, but if you take the tree out, you've got to replace it with a tree. But there was up to $20,000.
They have programs coming up.
I'm wondering if, if you need trees replaced too, because I know the Conservation Commission has applied for a number of grants for new trees, which doesn't help with the removal, but it'd be nice.
My thing with, with the cemeteries is there shouldn't be any trees in the cemeteries. Because they're only going to cause problems with, with the existing grave sites. They're going to start lifting up, they're at the point now where, where those big trees are along that fence, I mean, along that stone wall over on the 12A side of it. If you look at all of those headstones, they're all like this. Yeah, because the roots are going underneath them and, you know, turning them upside down.
So maybe it's also, if there are going to be trees, the right types.
Maybe more trees or something that doesn't have a big root system.
Yeah, yeah, because shade is nice and, and as you mentioned, runoff.
Yeah.
Yeah, so actually, you know, Bruce and I have talked and just hearing more about that, you know, we probably should add a bit more than the 1,500.
So you say you have somebody lined up, do you have a cross testament or?
I've asked him, I know Patrick.
I was going to say, you're talking to Patrick.
I've had conversations with him, he's aware of it, I think he's just so extremely busy at this point. And I even reached out to a company in Williamson and got no response from them, but I can, I'm willing to do it again and, and see if we can get somebody up there. I could also talk to Norwood, who they use.
They, they use TreeWorks.
TreeWorks at a month earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very, very expensive.
Correct.
We, we had to do a couple of things for you to say.
Yeah.
I'm willing to, if they can take them down, I'm willing, our crew is willing to get rid of the stuff to a point, I mean, obviously I can't, can't handle, you know, stuff like this, but the, the other stuff, we, we can do that if they just take it to the ground.
Now, how many trees do you have to come down?
Phew, there, there's probably six trees in Mount Hope. And there's, and the other, the other cemetery that's got the problem is, is West Hill. We've already, we've already had this past year, two major limbs come down and crashed the fence and land in the road. So it's.
So is this stuff we add to the budget or is this stuff we put into a capital or?
Um, no, it's, it's an O and M, so I would say that we need to increase that amount probably to 3,000 or 4,000.
It was 3,000 in '22, '23 and we didn't use it.
Yeah.
With 3,000 in '23, '24 and we didn't use it.
Was it because we had the work, but we couldn't find anyone to do it, is that what the work problem was?
Part of it, yeah.
And, and none of our local outfits will do it?
The one, the one person we're looking for is a local, local company.
Yeah, Patrick, who we're referring to, Patrick Barry, he owns Snappy Turtle.
Yeah, um, many, several years ago, I had a tree removed from my property in the falls and I think it was, oh geez. I remember the guy's name was Matt and it was like tree top or top tree, top limb or something like that. And I've never seen them advertised since, but they were, you know, a couple of brothers and, you know, they did the whole professional job and went up there with the.
Yeah, I heard about them too.
Yeah, and they might be, they might be less expensive.
I, I think if we could address, the, the, there's two in Mount Hope that are really, really bad.
Yeah.
If we could address those immediately this coming year and then maybe do one or two a year after that? So in a five year plan, we've got all the trees taken care of?
Yeah, that's how we have to do it, but.
So I would add 4,000 to the budget and if those two trees come out more than that, we deficit spend and fill it in the next year's budget. That's a solution.
Except for what did he say about the grant options?
Yeah, I think, I think those are primarily for new trees, but I'll double check, I didn't see it removed.
We'll put some new trees in there.
Well, in the past.
Those are the right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, like ones.
Yeah, we're not going to put in, yeah, maybe we need some willows, giving all the water.
Well, those are the worst root system.
Yeah, well, he had a lot of water problems.
So in the past, they did, I don't understand correctly, in the past, they did have funds for removal of, is it Dutchel, was that the?
Dutchel.
Ash?
Ash, yeah.
Oh, ash?
Yeah, because of the.
Is that an old ash board coming?
Yeah.
Were, were those ash?
No, they're maples.
Oh, they're maples.
We took advantage of that.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Can you go put some ash leaves on them? Say they're ash trees.
Well, we definitely got to address them, so.
So we'll add, okay. The other.
Actually, what the rest of the board, I'll support you.
Okay.
Yeah. The drainage work is going to be a big one if the, if the, if the suction doesn't work.
It, it really isn't though Dave, it's, it's, it's a couple hundred feet and it's probably six inch, the six inch, the six inch green pipe.
So our, our crew could do it?
I can do it.
Yeah.
If, if, if we want to budget the money, I, I can do it.
Well, there are funds in the, in the CIP.
I, I can get you an estimate on what, what it costs to do that.
Okay, just, yeah, send me an estimate.
And then we can, you know, the, the most important one is the one at the top.
So you feel that there's sufficient, okay, so let's get it done.
If we can slow that water down just.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about, I, I go up there quite a bit.
And probably maybe at, at some point regrade those interior roads so it's not a big hump in the middle. That'll probably help slow, slow the water down with it.
Good. The other cemeteries?
Most of the other cemeteries are in good shape, we can just keep picking away at the borders, the, the trees along the borders, take a little depth, a little bit out each year. The, the people that border the, the cemeteries, they're all for it. I've, I've talked to a few of them and they're all like, do what you've got to do. Because we don't want to be responsible for one of our trees, our limbs knocking over somebody's monument. So they've been very accommodating as far as that goes, so I think if we just keep it up and keep a good relationship with them and I think, you know, little by little, we just cut back on the borders.
And then I, I think one project that we've done some work on, but it's kind of an ongoing is the fencing in, is it the Falls?
The Falls.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we could replace the fence, basically, as you come into the cemetery and it goes yuts back parallel with Route 12, it's probably a 350, 400 foot section, the fence is completely gone.
Really?
Gone, and it's just, it's just an eyesore, if we could replace that with another chain, like a chain link fence. We, we lost the fence that was in front, the church took that fence out.
Oh, the tree that faller?
No, the, the church owned that property, we didn't, I didn't realize that and so their property actually goes another 20 feet into the cemetery. So they took the fence down and disposed of the fence. But the other cemeteries, the, the smaller cemeteries, they're all, they're all in really good shape.
And I know you were working on sign projects, is that all done? The signs?
We need to get new signs, I, I've been wanting to do this for five or six years and just.
So we haven't, we haven't done that?
We have not done that, no.
What's stopping us?
Money?
No, it's not money, it just, you know, I, I feel signs might be a little bit, you know, sticking in the finger in people, especially the local people who walk up there with their dogs and stuff like that, I don't want to offend anybody and.
So we're not replacing signs?
We're not replacing, there never were signs.
Ah, okay.
What kind of signs are you?
They're, you know, just the little, little signs that says, no plastic flowers or no, no, you know, dogs, you know, dogs must have a leash.
Our cemetery rules.
Yeah, cemetery rules.
I've seen that, yeah.
It's in, it's in the, it's in the, the thing that Donald gave me, has all the rules spelled out and I just been relaxed on it and the people have been, the majority of the people, they're more than accommodating by it, they just, you know, but they're, it is starting, the plastic stuff is starting to get carried away. There's way too much plastic stuff in the, in the cemeteries and you hit it with a weed whacker and there goes the weed whacker. So you've got to take it all apart, rebuild it.
I, I misunderstood what you were saying about signs in previous meetings, I thought you were meaning, you know, like you wanted to say Mount Hope or?
Oh, the historical society is doing that, yeah, they just put a new one up at Elmwood Cemetery.
Okay.
I, I haven't been there since they did it because they did it late in the year, I put the foundation in for them, but they have a sign up there that says Elmwood Cemetery is.
Yeah, I read that, those are prior, yeah.
They want to do that for every cemetery.
That's right, well, that's good then.
That's an ongoing, ongoing thing.
I misunderstood you when you were here previously asking for more money for signage, I think you should put it up. Every cemetery that I visit, my relatives are in, have the rules.
Right.
You know, and it's nicely done.
Especially if you, you know, if people understand that that plastic stuff is bad for your equipment, you know, well, people are going to complain anyway, you know that, and so they complain when, when, um, Norwood didn't have the Department of Corrections people to mow, so then they let it grow up and then they complained about that. Well, if you don't like it grown up, then don't put plastic stuff in that breaks the material, the equipment we use to keep it short.
Right.
But that's probably an article for the.
Bruce, I got a couple of questions and I ask this on the warrant, when we see warrants, there's different prices for different graves, why is that?
Different prices for different?
For graves, like one grave could be 550, one could be 700.
If it's weekday has a certain price, weekend has a different price.
Very good.
And now we're starting to get into, we, we, a third category where people are putting in mini vaults, which is not just the urn, now it's a, a much bigger hole. It's, it's not necessarily that much, but bigger, but it is a bigger hole.
Yeah.
So I just, I just, when, when you see it on, on the warrant or something like that, I, when it's a mini vault, I just add $50 to it.
All right.
It's not an absorbent amount of money, it's like, but it is a much bigger hole than, so, but the, the difference between the 500 and 700 are the weekday and weekend.
Very good, that's all I wanted to hear, thanks.
So for us, if we go to page 43 for the, uh, quick run through the capital improvement plan, again, that kind of summarizes what we started to talk about. As you can see from Mount Hope, there is 3,400 for the road and there's another thousand for some paving, so there's, in my opinion, ample funds there to do some work on that, as Bruce had talked about. And then down below, excuse me, 5,800 in there for fence work.
All right, so we have it, we've just got to do it.
Yeah.
Questions, any?
Is that it? I'm good.
Thank you Bruce.
I have one more request.
Awesome.
We have not changed the rates in seven years, since 2017.
Well, you weren't here when Charlie was asking about revenues.
Great.
So let's hear it, let's hear it.
I can tell you, I've done Mount Fire and Barry.
Comparisons.
Mount Fire and Barry Cemetery.
Thank you for the gift.
And I've also done Norwood University. I, I take care of Norwood, Norwood University Cemetery at the same time.
Yeah.
Just, just for instance, the Green Mount, Mount Hope Cemetery, Mount Fire, for a burial, a full grave burial, they're getting 1,500 dollars. Non-residents, 2,400 dollars. Norwood's, Norwood's price is 500 dollars.
Okay, we need to be better than that.
And, and a weekend burial is 700 dollars.
All right, so recap that for me again, 1,500?
Mount Fire full burial is 1,500 dollars for a resident, 2,400 dollars for a non-resident.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me, I got that wrong, sorry, wait a minute. The lot price is 1,500 dollars for a grave.
Yeah.
For a lot, ours is 600.
Okay.
A full burial in Mount Fire, weekday 1,500, 60 dollars, on a weekend they add 450 dollars. We're at 500 and 700, a cremation in weekday is 750, weekend add 450, we are at 300 dollars.
Sounds like the manager's going to make the recommendation.
You'll drop off a copy of the office.
A desk?
Yeah.
Sure, awesome, thank you. Bear, Berry full burial is 1,750, 1,850 on the weekend. Cremation is 860, 900 on the weekend. Wintertime they add 200, I didn't get a winter for Mount Fire.
Do we do winter burials?
We do if we can get into the ground.
Okay.
Our, our winter, winter burial rate is 700, excuse me, 800 dollars, 800 dollars. And our cremation is only 400 dollars.
The big one is the, the graves we, we sell.
Correct.
One of my neighbors came to me the other day and he bought four plots, I think you know who I'm talking about, and he was shocked at how little it was.
We, we probably, in this last year, we've had more burials than I've had since I started in 2013. More than 70% of those burials are people from out of state, but were, were born here.
Yeah.
So their family is, own that lot, so I don't feel like you can charge them a non-resident fee since the family, they're part of the family. They're doing it because of the price. If you go to Connecticut or anyplace like that, it's outrageous, it's 4,000 dollars. So we're, we're, we're way too cheap, we're in, I shouldn't say inexpensive. If we, if, in, in my recommendation, I'll go through what I charge Norwood. A, a full burial at Norwood is, is 1,000 dollars, weekend it's 1,200 dollars. Cremation is 400 and 600 on the weekends. My recommendation, recommendation for the town would be to increase the lot price from 600 to 800 per lot.
That's per grave?
Per grave, yeah, you've got to keep in mind per grave, how many people that really is.
Yes, so it's.
Five people.
Really?
Use the one full burial and four cremations on top of that burial.
That's our policy.
That's our policy.
Is that the correct policy?
I think so.
Wow. That's a lot.
Well, you're, you're, you're finding out now that 80 to 90% of burials today are cremations.
Yeah.
Very, very few people now are doing the full burials. The full burial rate, my suggestion, we go from 500 to at least 700 and from on the weekend, 700 to 900 and add an extra 100 dollars on the Sunday burial. For cremations, weekday, go from 300 to 450 and on the weekend, go from 350 to 650 and, and again, add 100 dollars for Sunday. And on the weekend, go from three fifty to six fifty and, and again, add a hundred dollars for Sunday. Keep in mind, we have not changed the rates going, it'll be eight years, going on eight years.
Well, I remember having that discussion eight years ago that was woefully low then.
Right.
And we were scared that we were gonna overprice, but it doesn't sound like we're overpricing.
We, we don't have a whole lot of space to fuck people.
Left, yeah.
The, the, the biggest.
At Mount Hope, there was that whole.
Mount Hope, we probably have, oof, we have that whole field, the faces.
Yeah, I mean, you and I had talked and you said for, you know, a hundred years or?
You, you probably, you probably, the, at the rate it's going, because a lot of the existing sites probably still have half their, their.
Capacity, yeah.
Capacity, right, still available. And that's what people are taking advantage of.
Yeah.
But, so, that whole field is, we've only put one, two, three, four, five, we sold five lots over there and there's probably enough for a hundred. But keep in mind that we could go back. I know that if Noah drops off there, that could be filled in. And move, and go back as far as the cemetery goes back. So there's more, more room for expansion there.
Well, I think at the least you should entertain higher prices.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. I mean, I caution about going to, I think like the Mount Pilgrim and others, they have higher costs.
I think his recommendation was reasonable.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, within that.
It's less than Norwich.
Yeah.
Certainly far less than Mount Pilgrim and Berry.
Yeah. If you wanna drop that off, we can get working on that.
Okay.
Mitch needs to watch this.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
The weekend and Sunday rates that you charge are higher, is that because of overtime?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Yep, um, because that, you know, when you look at the normal business, it's Monday through Friday.
That was my preamble.
Yeah.
Here's my real question is, you charge a, a weekend rate for like federal holidays or do you just talk about barrels?
Weekend, weekends and holidays.
I'm just curious.
Is the same price, would be the same price.
Okay.
I've also entertained the thought of going Monday through Thursday being weekday, Friday, Saturday being weekend. And Sunday adding the extra fee.
Well, I would say give it to the manager.
Yeah, we'll start that.
Yep.
I would also ask one more question if that's okay. Um, this is going back to the tree removal. This is just a thought, it might not pan out, but something you might look into is the Vermont League of Cities and Towns used to have grants available for mitigation of risks that were likely to incur an insurance claim? Like a safety or a safety issue, like a tree that could fall into somebody? I don't know if a tree falling in a cemetery and ruining gravesite would qualify for that, but it might be worth asking them.
But those trees at Mount Hope would fall on somebody else's property.
Okay, but, you know, it's something you could check.
Well, that's good.
It's possible, but it might not pan out, but with a thought. That's all my questions.
Good. Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Just wanna let you know, this is one of the most enjoyable jobs I've had in my entire life.
Really?
Yeah, 'cause your customers don't talk back to you, right?
They don't, they don't. They're very enjoyable to work for. Never, never get one complaint from them.
You know, I used to be in that business, so.
What do you know when you get ready to retire? When I, when, when they start talking back to me, when I sit on their, sit on their, their benches and talk to them, when they start talking back, back to me, I'm done.
Okay, fair enough.
Bruce, I always used to say I'd be the last to let you down.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, uh, planning and zoning department, not a lot.
Bruce, that's a gift from the, uh.
I won't forget my gift.
Bruce, not one too.
This is?
It's called Mortadella, it's a spicy bologna.
Nice, thank you so much.
Alright, enjoy.
Have a good night.
You too.
Page thirty-one. As you can see, it's a, in comparison to other budgets, fairly small. Looking just at a three point four percent increase, so there's an increase in wages. One of the big ticket items is Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. Most towns are member of the Regional Planning Commission. Get technical services and pay review plans and things, so, uh, again, not a lot there to talk about. I don't know if you have anything to chat about in terms of the department?
I guess, couple of things I'd mention is that postage and the fees charged for publishing notices in the newspaper have continued to escalate lately, so, um, you can probably see that our postage has gone up pretty steadily, as has our advertising legal notices.
I also noticed you send everything certified mail.
Pardon?
You send a lot of your stuff certified mail.
We are required to.
Is that because you're required to?
Yep.
So is it just for DR, for hearings or?
It is, yeah, anything that is a part of a public hearing, which would be generally things that go to the DRB.
Yep.
Um, we are required to notify abutting property owners by certified mail and that's a tricky thing. I've seen towns that will require the applicant to cover the costs and even the actual practice of notifying abutting property owners. But a lot of towns say you can't rely on the applicants to do that consistently and what you don't wanna do is delay a hearing because you get to the hearing and find out that people weren't notified. So a lot of towns say, we're just gonna do it, make sure it's done right. And, you know, you can try to, you can try to capture the cost in the hearing fees or you can sort of say, hey, we're gonna bill you for that, you know, the certified mail, but that's an extra hassle. So, you know, it's cleaner to just try to do it through hearing fees and I think largely we're successful at that, so. You know, the one place we run into trouble is when Norwich applies for something, there could be thirty abutting property owners and something, that's a, that's a big expense, but, you know. Hopefully, pretty soon Norwich is gonna submit an application to build their new cyber center and that will be a significant hearing fee or, or zoning fee for that permit, so. That'll cover a lot of that mailing that we've done, so I'm not too worried about something like that. Something else I think I'll mention real quickly, it's not in the budget for this year, but I'll probably pitch it to you next year. I've had some vendors contact me about offering services like zoning permits that are done like on the cloud or electronic forms, that kind of manage a bunch of that stuff and I talked to a couple of people this year and let them give me like a one-hour demo of their stuff. And said, hey, you know, you know, tell me what you got and a couple of them were, they sort of said, hey, you know, we generally charge something like five thousand dollars a year. And maybe the first year will be a three thousand dollar setup fee to get all your data moved to the cloud. And they said, hey, this is your data, we're hosting on the cloud, should you ever end your contract with us, we will give you all the data back because it's your data, we were just hosting it, so. But the setup is a little more expensive, but, um, and one of them was kind of pushing me to make a decision and I talked to Jeff a little bit about it and he said, oh, I don't think that's something we can squeeze in this year, so. I told him, and then they came back to me and offered to waive that three thousand dollar setup fee and instead of five thousand dollars a year, they dropped to like forty-six hundred dollars a year for five years. I said, boy, am I a good negotiator, just by saying no, but.
So my question is, what would the purpose of getting that be?
It can do a lot of things, it can, you know, get, it potentially can be a lot less paper on my desk because forms can be electronic. You can do some nice things and I'll probably, I've gotten, you know, both of these companies said, hey, here's some towns in Vermont that use our system. So talk to them and, you know, tell them how their life became easier by using our software. And one example I would give you is that you can set these, you know, people don't necessarily have to fill out the form electronically, but they can. And, you know, more and more people are comfortable with that sort of stuff, so they even comment to me sometimes, hey, can I fill out and submit my, my form electronically? You know, theoretically, you could. These systems would be able to, you can sort of set the fields that need to be filled in. So if an application is incomplete, the system will say, oh, incomplete application, you know, you've gotta fill this card in, so. That can save me the hassle of having to chase somebody down and say, oh, you, your form is incomplete. We need to get this thing completed before I can deal with it, you know.
So time efficiency, more convenience for the customer.
Potentially, and some of this stuff would then be on the, on the cloud somewhere. You could make it available so that people could look and see what permits have been applied for, been approved. If something is pending, they can see where it is in the, in the sort of chain.
So we don't currently offer that on our website?
No, um, that is something we could probably, and I sort of would like to do this, I've talked to Tom Davis real informally about it and just as an act of transparency, I would like to have, especially with the issue during COVID, we post on a clipboard outside my office all the approved permits, but if people aren't, if it's not convenient to come in and look at them, people can't easily see what's going on. And there are towns that will put their permit online, so people can just go on the town website and see what permits have been applied for, denied, approved, et cetera, et cetera. I think there's some advantage to that, just transparency and all that, so.
Yeah, I don't think that'd be that complicated.
No.
And I think it would be a good service to provide.
Yep, but, you know, Doug.
Which we haven't done.
Cloud-based system would replicate some of that stuff, but that's not the only way to do some of that. And, and this is a separate issue as well, but right now, our town clerk, you guys are probably familiar with this, but, uh, we're set up to take cash and checks, we don't take electronic payments for anything. And I, with some regularity, get people acting incredulous, like, you don't? You do know what year this is, right? But, you know, I, I understand we're working on that, but.
So on our website, we have, we post select board agendas and minutes and so, and they're updated. You could, you could change select board, use the same format, change it to zoning permits.
PDF files.
Right, and, I mean, it's not gonna cost you a thousand dollars a year to do that, 'cause we've already got
Yeah, we can do it.
Algorithm.
Yep.
Established. And I, and I agree with Mitch that I would like to be able to sit down and say, hey, there's a driveway permit. So that's not an illegal driveway, or that's great that they've got a permit to, you know, refurbish their house. But, uh.
Again, it's fairly easy done, I think, and we can make it a priority, I don't, it's not gonna be a lot of work.
Yeah, and then.
So we'll, we'll make that happen.
I think we need to do more of that for our, for our public. Well, we've got ARPD that is, that maps out the, uh, utilities. It would be nice to be able to say, uh, with, without having to, right now, if you wanna see who owns the property, two thirty-two Thompson Hill, it's a drill. She should be able to, be able to just type in two thirty-two. Other municipalities, you have that ability to do that. Well, we're, you know, in, in the year two thousand, we didn't have email for the manager, so, you know, we're coming a long way, baby. Were you still using carbon paper? Smoke signals.
Anyway, I've kinda taken the conversation away from this year's budget into theoretical stuff, so, sorry about that.
Well, it's always good to discuss and plan for it. And I'm amazed that we aren't in that level yet.
Yeah, we should.
And Laurie is working out payment options, or is that what I heard?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I knew that that was something that was in process, but.
Wasn't that a, I'm sorry, consideration for ARPD funds?
Yeah, we talked about it a bunch, the option they had come up with so far was a five dollar, well, the, so that, that was a different, okay, a different program, but yes, the program we're looking at. Electric water sewer, take credit cards, you can't come into the office and give us your credit card. You go through a separate company. Anyway, uh, we're looking at a program, we're gonna have demos after the holidays, when everybody's back at the office. That actually is free for the municipality, the cost for the, like, there's no cost for the program. And then they charge the customer directly for.
Convenience fee.
For, for using that, right. So theoretically, there's, there's no cost to us if we chose to do that. I have taught some other towns, um, one was St. Albans, that for water and sewer, if you come into the building, I don't know why they do it this way, but if you come into the building and use, pay with a credit card, they don't charge you the fee. But they're paying twenty to thirty thousand dollars in credit card fees annually, just for water sewer. Didn't know what the other, so, you have to keep it, and, and we all know this, but just, you know, we're not private business, so if we're gonna absorb credit card fees, why, that means property taxes are going up.
No, it should, it should be the user of the card.
Right, and well, there's just been some, you know, concern that charging that much to the user, but, you know, if Jeff wants to pay his taxes with a credit card, why would I have to pay more in taxes so he has that convenience? That, so that's a, a difference with trying to bring that into a government service, it's, it's not like private business.
Just like when I explained the pool and the sewage charges. Oh, you really, you, you want the town to pay for it? Not the, not the user of those, of the water in the sewer?
And, and that's where that user.
No, I didn't think of that.
Comes in, if a person wants to use a credit card for their convenience, and to me, that's a user fee and that person should pay that fee, not the rest of the town.
We're not a private business that has that in their pricing methodology, as I call it.
There's no other way to do that other than increase property taxes.
And more and more businesses are being upfront.
Yes, they are starting to charge.
There's a business down there that repairs cars, that has the same name as you do, that, they've implemented that policy, so. I'm writing checks now.
Many, many of those have signs up now saying, we're, we're gonna charge you a two or three percent.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I said, what did you say? We've got twenty-five vendors at the farmer's market, not everybody can process a credit card, so they come to the market manager and there's a fee.
And then you, you just, there's a lot more nuances that go into this because if we're gonna take credit cards and then somebody comes in and is making, you know, three copies at the vault and it's seventy-five cents, if it's a regular copy, or three dollars, if it's whatever the rate is. And then, so, are we paying, so then you wanna use the credit card, well, then there's a five dollar fee. Or the, so at what point are, are we gonna waive any of the fees under a certain dollar number? So there's, there's a lot of that little nuance that goes.
Yeah, you're on the minimum.
Goes into that.
Well, Mitch, I appreciate you bringing all this stuff to the forefront, because I think we talked about this all before and it's just a little wacky, we need to get into the, what century are we in now?
Well, I think, I'm gonna add one more thing, which is just theoretical, but the money, if you do cash or check, the money is the money. But if you use a credit card, eventually that money is diminished until it doesn't exist anymore. And all of it went to the bank, if you look at all the transfers. So I can't, I can't see, the only reason I see it is 'cause she pointed out some people just don't have the cash flow to pay their bills, so they spread them out.
Hundred percent.
And again, I, I agree with, then that's there, that's, that's on them. That's on them, that's not on, that's not my business down in the falls because somebody else over on West Hill could, did manage it that way.
And we do just, for those, anyone else in, listening, I mean, the property taxes, we do offer, um, direct withdrawal from accounts of an ECH, so that is available and you can sign up for that anytime.
Yes.
Which we encourage. And there is no fee for that, uh, on anyone's end, so that is already available. And there is no fee for that on anyone's end. So that is already available.
Yeah.
As well as.
It was getting in my check anytime.
Who's, they are always?
No, nobody is.
Oh, I see.
I have one person that goes into it.
Anything else?
No, thank you much.
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else have any gifts for me?
Sorry, she missed out. I brought my bag last week.
Thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome. Thank you for all you do, Mitch.
Thank you, Mitch.
Same to you.
Now, is there anybody on the board who's not been gifted import from Charlie from Farm More Farm?
Okay. We have two secular pork chops in our freezer at the motor.
We'll try, we're not, Cassie and I are not going to be there Thursday, but we'll try to have a.
Mitch, is this your?
Mitch.
Mitch, is that your budget or?
And your water bottle.
Well, then, oh dear.
That was your gift to me. Thank you.
And your budget?
Oh, that's not mine.
Okay.
And we're based there.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that was a surprising fifty minutes. What else, sir?
We just thought we'd just take a few minutes and just kind of run through some of the things that you talked about. But also just, I guess during the break, just think about some of the big items.
Well, believe me, it's on my mind every day.
So I guess some of the big items, one was the police department. You know, we had talked about the fact that we're budgeting six officers. And the reason we're doing that obviously is because we continue to have, we anticipate sizable surplus because of a lack of officer. The downside, and you folks pointed out, if you take that position out, it can be very difficult to put that back in. So again, that's something that we'd ask that, you know, over the next week or two. Excuse me. Just kind of think about that item. Along with that, in the police department, we're budgeting for three vehicles versus the four that we've budgeted in the past. That one's such a tough one. Every municipality that I've been associated with, and this, these, and the boards here for the many years I've been, always debated whether we go to three to four or back or, you know, vice versa. So that's something that I think is going to need a lot of, a lot of thought. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Another item was the board, I think spent a fair amount of time talking about wages for the ambulance folks. As you recall, we did add a dollar per hour for all of the, the personnel, except for paramedic. So still kind of working on that one.
Jeff, is this with that dollar or was this before?
That was before.
So this is current?
This is the current, yeah.
So what is V E F R?
Aren't those the levels of the attendance? Those are the levels of the attendance, like E M T, advanced E M T, medic, C C P. So the V E F R must be the basic and the E M R.
No training.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. It's first responders with no training.
And then E M R is emergency responder?
Yeah, with some training and then it goes up the level.
E M T, A, advanced E M T, medic.
It's just level of, medic is to the far right.
Yeah, we're asking what it is. Is it paramedic?
Paramedic?
Yeah.
So then what's C C P?
I haven't seen that one before. Have you, Lord?
I just, yes, yes.
I just got it.
They're the highest. It must be a.
Very specialized.
Yeah, I've never seen that one.
Critical care.
Maybe, maybe. That very well. Yeah, could be. Critical care paramedic.
Something.
Or cardiac care.
Yeah, some kind of higher level.
We don't know. All right. So we're going to think about that.
Couple of others is for Roxbury and Berlin. We increased the per capita rate by three dollars. Done in comparison to other municipalities, it's still quite a bit lower than what Berry Town charges. Berlin, they're in the fifty dollar range. You folks are with this and jumped up to thirty-five. In that range, thirty to thirty-five.
That's certainly a lot better than where we were.
Yeah. So again, the boards in the, in the past have said, yeah, we definitely need to correct this and get on a better track. But the general feeling was to kind of move it at a slower pace, you know, a few, a few dollars each year.
So it sounds like it's ten percent, like Charlie said, are proposed.
Still haven't seen the call, uh, call ratio. I'd like, I asked for that for Roxbury and Berlin, number of calls we have supported from Northfield Emergency Services to Roxbury and Berlin.
For this year?
Uh, this year is fine.
Yeah, just a, so. Twenty-four, twenty-five, the year we're in is thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, that's it.
We put, yeah, I couldn't quite hear. We put thirty-eight into the twenty-five, twenty-six, but it's.
So it's about ten percent.
Go ahead.
Well, when you're so woefully low, it's hard to make up, you know, all at once. I won't bring up my run rate. Remember, I talked about that last year.
Yeah. So I mean, those were kind of the, the big items and I don't know if I'm throwing this out, but you know, the budget, we're at about eight, just it was eight.
As I said in my letter, it'll be coming in January. The board is going to face some very hard decisions come January regarding the budget. So I have a question. Is it possible for me to get a list of the surplus? What, what the actual surplus was and what we, I'd like to just see the list in front of me. I know it's in the budget. Should I get a list of what the total surplus that we use within the budget was? I know I could be going through all the pages.
We can definitely do it, yeah.
Yeah, I'd just like to see that.
Yeah.
For a lot of different levels. That would be one request I had.
I'm sorry, just a.
So total of the, the, the surpluses that are, that are applied in this budget?
In this budget.
Yeah. And what our starting surplus was from last fiscal year. I, I, I think that would be nice to have.
Is it? Are they in here?
Well, it is. It's, but you got to go to different pages to, to look at it. I just like a one page.
You go to C I P and it says from surplus.
Right. And the arrow points and.
Okay. I can, I'll put it into a more formal.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But just for a.
So what, what the amounts were and then what they were specifically used.
Exactly.
So town general?
Yeah.
Just for roughly three hundred and thirty thousand?
Hold on, just a minute. For some reason I lost my notebook.
So this was audited June thirty, twenty-four?
Town general for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Three thirty, six fifty-three.
Yeah.
We proposed using two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred?
Two thirty-seven.
Two hundred, correct?
Yeah.
Brings it down to ninety-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-three.
All right. And what does that leave for a total balance?
No, that, that, well, that leaves, that would leave us with ninety-three thousand.
Okay.
Town highway, sixty thousand, three oh six, and we did not use any.
Sixty thousand, three oh six.
Was, correct.
Very good.
When we did not use any.
In this current budget.
Correct. And then the C I P has surplus most due to interest, but due to interest. Town general, C I P, forty-two thousand, nine forty-eight. We use forty-two thousand, five ten.
See, this is good. Yeah.
Brings it down to four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. But we don't have a reason to need a surplus in the C I P rule. Highway C I P, twenty thousand, oh sixty-six. We use twenty thousand. Brings it down to sixty-six.
Very good. It's very helpful for me. I like that.
But I'll, I'll write that up. We, I think we've changed one or two accounts that I might have been using surplus for, or we might have increased. So I'll have to look at that and see whether we adjust that. But that gives you an idea.
I appreciate that a lot. So then explain to me the balance funds that we would have. And that we, so I'm trying to get to that number that the voters said we cannot carry more than.
Well, we're below that. The, the voters said we cannot carry more than a hundred and ninety thousand.
Yes.
And we're looking at ninety. We're proposing.
That's the number. I wanted to verify that. Okay, very good. So we've reduced our surplus quite a bit from the past.
Well, do you, I mean, it's all year to year.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean.
But sometimes we carry higher balances.
Yes, but reducing the town general to ninety-three thousand is probably.
The lowest.
Close to or around the lowest we've done.
That, that was my biggest reason for doing this drill is to see that. Okay.
And again, that, you know.
You don't want to go below that.
No. The unknown is, that was June of twenty twenty-four. We're doing next year's budget.
Right.
So we have all of this year that will happen in between that.
I know you and I have always had this conversation of having three months, six months. I know we have plenty of line of credit and we have plenty of. No, this is good. Thank you very much. That was my only request. So at our next budget meeting, if you, we will have Economic Development Department.
Yeah.
And you'll provide us the information we requested.
Which is in January?
I believe so. It's January sixth or seventh.
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 Yep. And what else will we cover at that meeting? Just follow up of these big ticket items?
Correct.
Okay. And very good. Seven oh two. So any public participation unscheduled? So any need for an executive session?
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Moved in second, further discussion, hearing now. All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, tapped.
Opposed? Abstaining? Five zero zero. Thank you. Happy holidays to those I won't see. And to those I will see, six p.m. Or when you get there.